All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning board of appeals meeting for July 19th, 2023. The first item on the agenda, our approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. The first is May 17th, 2023. Everybody have a chance to take a look at them and the issues and problems? All right. I'll make a motion that we accept those meeting minutes for May 17th, 2023 as presented. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That was easy enough. And then we have, and I'm gonna abstain on this because I wasn't here, but we have the zoning board of appeals minutes for June 21st, 2023. Any comments, questions, corrections? Okay. Hearing done, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for June 21st, 2023. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you can mark for that and abstain because I wasn't here, so I can't follow up. So that takes care of that. All right, we have one application, and that is Optum.
Somebody here picked mine up.
And I wasn't here the last time around, but I understand you were here initially, and there were some changes and things like that.
Yes.
You're here with an amended application, so you know what to do. Just briefly tell us what you want to do, what the nature of your application is, and we'll determine personal permission for us to accept it and go down for a public hearing. Okay.
My name is Ed Simon, I'm with the City of Manhattan.
Why don't you go to the, yeah, what's great?
Ed Simon, I'm with the City of Manhattan. I'm representing Optum, a progress facility near town. They are pursuing a variance on three fronts, one being for a combined total square footage for their facility, as well as additional photographs for their engine stores, which is part of the coverage, and the existing monument sign. The existing monument sign, I believe, is a two-tented monument. That two-tented monument was constructed and installed by others at another date. That existing monument sign is currently over. They allow square footage allowed. So what they're, what Optum would like to do is strictly replace light for light in order to uniformly leave the monument where it is. So that being said, would you like to go through each one?
Just go through each one briefly. I think there is going to be an issue, if I'm correct, as to whether there's even an issue as to the door sign.
Yeah, I had a call out to the zoning enforcement officer about, you know, if the door signs should be included as part of the calculation. So we're going to proceed today, assuming they are. If not, there's nothing you really need to do, which is amend it on the record.
Okay. You may amend it.
Okay, which is fine. I mean, it's strictly there to allow people to know that those facilities slowly has their hours on.
There's two changes to the front of the building and then the monument sign.
Correct. So the front signage has already been approved through a permit process, and that currently is standing at 29.3 square foot. Total max for the property is 30. So if you then go out to the monument sign and take into account that one, that is putting it over by an additional, I think it's 42 square feet?
The total has to be 30, and then you have the monument sign about 22.3.
Correct. Part of the issue with it being over is because we're trying to go back light for light with what's existing, which doesn't help because that gives us an additional 11 square foot over the total aggregate.
So this one, the one that's already been approved, needs a door sign? So what are your measurements for the door signs, if we need it?
They are on there. All the dimensions are on there, and this square foot is just called out. So this, for example, this one here is 3.15 square feet. And then the second door, it is 1.17.
1.7 or 2.7? And then this is the monument sign?
That is correct.
And no changes to lighting or anything, just whatever is existing?
It exists. That monument sign is not eliminated, and it's strictly a pattern replacement. So we're not touching the monument itself, it's just changing back what it's got.
Questions? It's pretty straightforward, so.
It is, and it's, that's our general scope of work.
Again, any questions?
How many signs will be approved if you don't have a variance overall for the signage?
That I don't know.
So the signage, the overall signage has to be 30, and I don't know what was applied for, but at the wall sign is 29.3, which is under 30. So maybe they didn't know about the other ones. I'm not sure, because I didn't see any of the signs on it.
Kind of the way the north side was, and the rear wall was.
Yeah, perhaps.
It's on there, and then everything else is through.
Do you know how these signs were applied for? Were they applied all together or separately?
Unfortunately, I do not know.
I could ask any question.
Yeah, I had the same thought.
I don't have any questions, but the proposal seems pretty straightforward.
We have enough information, so I make a motion that we accept the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, great. We've accepted the application. There's enough information for us to consider it, and I don't think we really need anything additional. It's a nice application. Anybody need anything else? Sometimes we need grantings and those, but you have everyone here. The public hearing is the 16th of August. Is that a date that you can be here, August 16th, or somebody from?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put it on for a public hearing, August 16th. And basically, you'll do the same thing. You'll get up here. If there are neighbors or people who are interested, they will be here, and they can ask you a question, that kind of stuff. Basically, it just goes through the same process we went through here and ask that assumption. All right, so we'll see you here on the 16th of August. Well, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a little bit of cleanup here. So Kim recommends, and I think is correct, that this be designated under secret as a type 2 under secret 17.5, secret 2. So I make a motion that we accept it as a type 2 action under that section of the secret.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And some referrals?
Yes, some referrals to the planning board as usual, and Dutchess County Planning.
Yeah, because it's a non-residential, so we'll do it to Dutchess County Planning as well.
All right. Let's see. Do you want to, as I think, get a chat for that?
Yeah, how do you wanna, do you wanna be doing?
I mean, I'll take it.
Okay. We can work together and try to do that transition.
Okay, so I'll be starting to, and anything else?
I think that's it, you know, yeah, I think that's kind of it for this one.
Okay. So that's it for the?
I'll keep the board informed when I find out, when I speak to Brian about Clarus Cage Hamlets there.
Yeah, I bet you there's not, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to defer to him on how it goes, and I can talk about if any variances are needed, sort of, sign that's gonna, you know, kind of how that all works. But that sign, the wall sign is included as the overall signage too, so.
All right, so we have two matters on for public hearing. One of the matters was not noticed correctly, so, or in a timely fashion, so that's not on, and that's the Williams matter, but the matter that is on.
Is there anyone from Williams?
I was saying he's here, so I don't know if he wants to present.
Did you want to present your proposals or anything?
Me?
Well, Bell's first, but, or actually, it does.
This is not a public hearing, but Mr. Williams.
Yeah, okay, we'll let Mr. Bell come on.
Yeah, not much.
Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
I just submitted the, whatever digital pictures.
Yeah.
And I think it works out to, the structure itself, excluding the overhang, is about 2 foot 7 inches closer to the road. So a lot less than the deck that I took off.
That's more.
Thank you for these pictures, even though they're awful.
Yeah, they were. They're not cheap.
Oh, I'm sorry. So these were just the renderings that we had requested at the last meeting, just showing the final proposed with the addition to the roof and color wise to help see. And then you provided the, their measurements?
Yes, so if you look up front, it looks like it's 15 foot overall for the stone work when I went down the wall. But the existing building, if you do the map on that, is about 2 foot, 2 foot 7 inches past the jut out of the building is there.
Is it on, am I looking? Do you have, would you point to where it is? Sure.
It's right here.
Is it, it's not measured? Do you have any measurements from the road to that location?
I think I provided that way back.
Okay.
Yeah, Rhinebeck has moved the road about 25 feet closer to the house, so.
Really?
Yeah. There's that turn in the road, so in an effort to make less of a turn, there may be more non-comformity. Or non-comformity.
Okay, I'll double check if I need to kind of just ask Gretchen to just confirm the measurements?
Sure.
And then, just so, when we're considering the variance, we just put those with that number.
Right, and one thing I did not do is the house is actually angled to the road. I measured it to the first, I guess you would say, northeast corner, and maybe even more in compliance as the house angles away to where the new.
Yeah, the whatever's closest is the best measure.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Catherine, I know you had requested some of these pictures. Did you have any comments on them, any further information you wanted from them?
No, I think they're very helpful.
Yeah, it was nice.
Yeah, it looks expensive, but. Well, when it's all done, it'll be nice, but unfortunately, I had, I had some people come in a year and a half ago, giving some ideas. Landscape coming out of our system, because that's all that's available at the time. One of our hard and $30,000 dollars. That's not including the roof thing, just landscape. Doing stone work, can you imagine?
I can imagine I got to the bottom line of work.
Any further questions?
So we can probably schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, it was, it was accepted subject to having this. I wasn't here the last time.
Yes, yeah, it was subject to the colorized renderings before, after photos, which we have, I think we have the before from Google Earth. This was the before, which shows actually the porch, the important part. And then the survey, which you provided.
Okay, great. Are you available on the 16th of August for a public hearing?
I should be here.
Okay. So what will happen is you just come on up, and your neighbors may or may not be present. People around can be notifying about this, and they can ask you a question about the application. But basically, you just go through the same process, just say what you want to do. We may have some questions, again, neighbors may have some questions, and then we'll do a resolution after that.
Okay. A resolution, does that happen that night?
It does not happen that night. It typically happens, we have 60, assuming we close the public hearing, which we typically would do, and probably in something like this, which is not that complex. Probably close the public hearing on the 16th. We have 62 days to render a resolution. We do not take 62 days. We typically render it within 30 days, which is the next meeting, so we, I'm confident we would have a resolution for you on September, or whatever it is. 20th, okay.
I believe there is no doubt, I'll be in Colorado, but you can.
Wait, you don't have to be here for the resolution. Yeah, you don't have to be here for the resolution, just for the public hearing, so you can answer all the questions. So as long as you're able to be here on the 16th of August.
Sure.
Who will notify the neighbors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speaking of, did you get that email?
No, I didn't.
Did you get the new email?
This is my bad. Because in the past, I did one variance years ago, right up, they did everything, and I felt like for $1,100, I was gonna get this work done for me, right? But no, it's on me.
So you know what you have to do, good. Great.
Yep, I did, I'll get it.
If it makes you feel any better, we get paid.
Okay.
But I understand it does get expensive.
Right. Okay.
I apologize.
Don't apologize. Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll see you on the 16th. All right.
Bell?
Bell? Hello? Okay, is there anybody here for the Bell application? Oh, well, you can still get your presentation, just kind of tell us what you, you said that.
I'm Allison Bell, owner of 2023 Root Energy. We are looking for variance so that when they construct our fence to be 5 foot 11 inches, and 4 feet is the current law. So we're looking for variance of 1 foot 11 inches, mostly for safety and security concerns that we have being on 9G with the speed of traffic being what it is, the height of our child, and history of accidents and trespass on our driveway and on our property. So we, of course, attempted to landscape, hoping to deter some of that, but traffic, and unfortunately, it was not proven to be very successful. So we next have decided to construct a fence that it will offer a full passage of view, so it's not a priority seat back, because it won't be silent. But we are looking for the additional height to add as much safety as it can.
And I just have a quick question. I have a 5 foot fence, which is really a 5 foot fence, so it's a 5 foot fence, it's over 5 foot 2 or 5 foot 3. And did you consider that? I know the law's 4 foot, you're asked for essentially 6 foot, 5 foot, whatever. Any, did you consider something a little bit less?
We had initially considered something a little bit less, especially when we learned that the current law was 4 feet. And we wanted 6 feet, and came down from 6, because we're trying to be as reasonable as we can be. And we did, we did consider it, but ultimately, we would appreciate the extra 11 inches.
So this isn't a standard kind of fence?
It's more of a farm style fence, yeah.
You typically come 4, 5, and 6.
Yes, yeah, so this is a, this is more of a custom construction for our property. The posts will be the highest point, so the last slat, the last board will be lower than 5 foot 11 inches. But we're trying to make sure that we, the highest point is where you have to go.
Yeah, and the last slab, any reasonable estimate as to what the height of that would be?
I don't, I'm sorry, I couldn't, you know, consider a lot of that, because my husband was constructing it.
And I apologize, since I was later, the last, has there been a site inspection? Okay, so we can go out there. Do you have, are those posts currently in position?
The posts are in place right now.
Okay, so we'll be able to see that?
Yes.
When we go, because we're gonna do a site inspection, so we'll be able to see the height of the post, but also, do you have slabs or the?
We don't, yeah, because when we received the staff work order, we stopped all working for the quarter materials.
Could you just put, maybe, you don't have to put slab, but maybe put a string or something, so we know what the, what the highest of the?
Absolutely, and the posts aren't at the exact height either, they were.
Yeah, the posts are tall right now, but the top slab will be roughly around the 5 foot. We're looking for 5 foot 11. It's just gonna be equal spacing that's gonna determine the actual top rung of where the fence is. So we're anticipating 10 inches down from the very top of the post, where the first lap would start, maybe a foot in between or so, something that'll be aesthetically pleasing as far as an easing, even gap would be concerned.
But if you can just, for our purposes, there is gonna go on site, so we can see what it looks like there. So if you can put something to show us, and give us a, your general words, that would be great.
Sure, absolutely.
Should I cut, should I cut the posts? Because we're still under no work order right now, so the posts are long right now, so they're standing abruptly and obtrusively, probably, to you guys, too tall. You're gonna need, they're at the 6.
Maybe a marking or something.
I think a mark.
A mark would be sufficient, excellent. I can do mark, I gladly mark pops, I'll show you where the rungs will be, yes.
Markings would be better, I don't want you to get in trouble. And I don't want to get in trouble.
Nobody really wants to get in trouble.
Nobody wants to be in trouble.
So there we go. Another quick question. I know you gave some photographs of some other fences, I guess in the area, similar, do you know what heights of these are?
I don't.
Because I, dogs to donuts, they're short.
I would, I would suppose they are, and, yeah.
I mean, I was thinking they're probably like the Holly Porch Farm, or it's probably Forge, so is the Buckwood Farm.
The one that does the horses is probably closer to the 5, 6 foot. That does horses, and it's gonna be very similar. That was styling, just to show the three slacks across and the open view, but the, it's based off of those pictures locally on the type of fence to fit with the motif. But the other ones are definitely shorter, close to 4 foot, and the horse type ones for the livestock are definitely taller, 5 to 6.
And this was the other, we had asked about if they were gonna do a gate. You said that you were considering a gate, you weren't sure, so we asked you to just provide it, just in case you did want it, so this was obviously, I'm assuming, the one.
It overlaid, yeah. I just found the closest approximation of what we've accomplished, and I overlaid it to the posts that are existing. So that, that would be the ideal situation. It would be the same materials as the fence, the same pressure treated wood, whatever.
What kind of color are you, are you guys gonna do it kind of like this light color, or like the dark color, which you kind of like?
Bra, trying to keep it bra if possible, unless we're mandated to paint, but just as natural.
So, so similar to what the posts look like?
Yes, oh, very, yes, whatever.
These were just kind of drawn in just in writing.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
And can I assume that you are Mr. Jason Bell?
Yes.
We need to identify you for that record.
I am Jason Bell, I am the husband and the other participant on the, yeah, currently babysitting.
I don't think, I don't need any more information, I think I have enough here to consider the application. Anybody else need any more information? I think really what we need is the site inspection. And so what I'll do at this time is make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. What just happened is we closed the public hearing, which means that we have 62 days to render a resolution, granting, or not granting the application, or giving you something in between. But in the meantime, what we'll do is we will contact you, and what's a good time for us to come out there?
I'm, I'm pretty flexible, I can stay at home with my son, so as flexible as the board needs to be, we're gonna be as flexible.
So we'll give you a call, we'll set up a meeting, I'm sure that we're gonna want to come out and do a site inspections to see. And if you need a little bit of time to do the markings, just so we have an idea of what we're talking about.
Sure, yeah, at least a, you know, a couple of days or a week, yeah, that would be fine. We can do it very quickly.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll make our interest to come out there, and we'll, please, we'll see what it looks like. Great, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Catherine, do you want to start having little preliminary discussions, or do you want to hold off on that until somebody else?
This one, I think I'd just like to, I'd like to go out there first, just to see. I was about to say, I'm on the fence about this one, but that's, that's terrible.
It's appreciated.
I'm really glad you didn't say it.
I am glad I didn't say that, so I apologize. But I think we, we, maybe at the end of the meeting, we'll talk about.
Yeah, we can talk about.
How resolutions are gonna be done. But this should probably be given to somebody, I think, in the meantime, as far as, has it been assigned out yet?
I don't know, because we were still kind of discussing how to move resolutions.
Oh, we could, I guess we could assign it to somebody.
You sure? After we take this one, and then we'll start figuring out the transition, and how the resolution will be done.
All right, and that's it for the public hearings, and the last word of business is the Kaplan resolution, which I believe Joe has done. Joe's, this is your first one?
I'm nervous.
Yeah, there's nothing to be nervous about, just read, and one question, I'm sure you'll let us know. Take it away.
Okay. Resolution of the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals, in a matter of variance application, like GBA case number 1042. Whereas, background, applicant is Jerry Kaplan, referred to hereafter as the applicant. The applicant is represented before this board by Bud Maxwell, the firm of Upstate Modernist LLC, and Andrew Wessick, Esquire of Roden Avenue, with the name of Shayle and Oliver LOP. Property involved. The appeal involves property located on 335 Southbury Turnpike in the Town of Rhinebeck, which bears the tax parcel number 135089-6371-00-676.59. The applicant's property is approximately 73 acres in area and is located in the RC5 zoning district. Description of the project. The application proposed, and the applicant proposes a place a 7800 square foot sports park, associated surrounding fence in front of the principal residence. The applicant does not meet the zoning law, Rhinebeck zoning law, 025-273, which requires that accessory structures cannot project closer to the front street than the principal building. Principal structure is 1195.8 feet from the front street, front beach street. The sports court proposed to be closer to the front street at 745.5 feet. Therefore, the applicant requires an area variance of 450.3 feet to place the sports court and associated surrounding fence in front of the principal residence. GBA agreement, highness of appeal. The applicant filed the appeal with the board on May 1st, 2023, and is pending in court's appeals. The appeal was filed within 60 days of the date of the CEO's decision appealed from dated April 5th, 2023, and thus, the application is timely as recorded by 125-125B of Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The application was deemed completely accepted by the board, review on May 17th, 2023, subject to the applicant providing additional renderings of the sports court, colorized elevations of the fence, and an updated survey map. Seeker. After accepting the appeal, we determined that this matter should be classified as a type 2 action under the state environmental law movement act, because the project proposed action involves construction, expansion, replacement of minor accessory, a person. expansion, replacement of minor accessory, appurten, appurtenment residential structures, including garages, carports, caddies, dacks, swimming pools, tennis courts, satellite dishes, fences, barns, storage sheds, and other buildings. Not changing the land use or density, six N Y C R R, six one seven point five C twelve. No further inviting memo or review is required pursuant to seeker. Referrals and responses. The application was referred to the town planning board and town Rhinebeck Conservation Board, CAB, on, I don't know, official.
Uh, May nineteenth.
May nineteenth pursuant to the town of Rhinebeck zoning law, one twenty-five, dash, one twenty-five. CAB responded on July fifth, twenty, on July fifth, twenty twenty-three, stating it has no concerns with the proposed project as the applicant's made significant efforts to shield the sports court from the public road and adjoining properties by working in the court. Planted additional vegetation, properly handling, handling drainage issues caused by green mold, ingrained in the court for the project. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board also responded on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, stating that the area variance requested raise no significant plan or environmental concerns to the location of the court being over seven hundred forty-five feet from the property line, ant presence, and enhancement of existing tree lines between the proposed court and the Salisbury Turnpike. Public hearing. Public hearing was held on this appeal was duly advertised and held at the board hall on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. During the course of the public hearing, we received no comments from the public. Public hearing was closed on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Site visit. On June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, ZBA members Catherine Carter, Richard Kapacinski, and Joe Koubek, who also represented CAB during the visit, site visit, visited the applicant's property and surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Sports court is well off the road. It would be shielded by two rows of trees and other vegetation from the road. No significant visual impacts appear to be notably visible from the road. Also, the location of the court would be best, the best place given the land's, the geography and existing forest demand. No business or other deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Findings are fact and conclusions why, balancing test. In our review of the variance, uh, we have considered the benefit to the applicant that the area variance is granted as weight against the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determined that the variance requested should be granted as no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the great deal, the great deal of variance. Consideration of the five factor in balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by one twenty-five, one twenty-four C one of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. If the variance is granted or cause undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause detriment to nearby properties, we find the answer to this question is no. Reasons for this are the sports court sits well off the road over seven hundred feet and will be shielded by two rows of trees and other vegetation existing in plan. In addition, the side boundaries of the court will be hidden from adjacent lands by existing forests. Fence is planted, which is a cedar farm with mesh and proposed to be in a dark color will not be visible from the road or adjacent properties due to the choice of materials and structure proposed. Now, our outward weight is proposed for the sports court, thus avoiding the, or visibility at night. Can, uh, B, can the benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance? We find the answer to the question is no. Even though the court sits on seventy-three, on seventy-three acre site, moving the court behind the house in accordance with zoning law would require significant tree cutting and significant land grading, thus creating more impact than here, the variance is granted. As the requested area, uh, C, as the requested area variance substantial, we find the answer to this question is no. The sports court is near the principal structure. The principal structure is set back far from the road and the sports court is less than five hundred feet from the principal structure. On a property the size and set back far from the road, less than, area variance is not significant. D, will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the area or district? We find the answer to this question is no. The sports court not will not be visible from the road or to the neighbors given the existing in plan trees and other vegetation. The applicant proposed this location for the sports court to avoid cutting trees and requiring greater land grade. The change of water flow due to any grade change on property will be dealt with by appropriate, uh, drainage mechanisms. I think.
Yeah, there's a repeat, I got it.
Okay. E, is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. There is enough room to place the sports court behind the primary residence if the change would create more significant environmental impacts such as tree removal and more severe grading. Eleven, minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing tests, we must determine if this requested variance is a minimal, is the minimal variance requested inadequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant is placing the court in one of the least intrusive places on the property due to the topography and location of the existing, uh, proposed vegetation. Placement of the sports court will minimize any environmental considerations like drainage as well as minimizing visual impacts from the road or adjacent properties. In addition, the requested fencing design will minimize its visibility from the public road and adjacent properties. A, now, therefore, it be resolved based on all the facts described above and reasonably described above as follows. Section one zoning, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The ZBA hereby grants the variance requested on the proposed court to be closer to the front street at seven hundred forty-five point five feet than the existing house pursuant to one twenty-five, dash, twenty-seven, eighty-three. Section two, granting of the variance is expressly contingent upon construction being informally required plans presented to the board. Section three, granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full pin in the town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits in connection with the application with full compliance of Article, uh, fourteen, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Variance shall not be deemed granted until all fees are paid by full, in full life, applicant. Section four, granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any required permits and or approvals. The proposed structure must be constructed, constructed in conformity with the application in twenty seven. Section five, the area, the area variance shall not avoid this proposed construction as commenced within one year of the resolution.
That's it? Good job.
But, uh.
Well done.
So I guess, why do the motion to approve resolution?
What we have to do is we have to discuss a little bit.
Okay.
So any discussion about it? I, I only saw the, uh, the application, which I, that's always fine, you know, the materials. It made sense to me. I did not do the site visit, so I defer to you guys as to, to that. But I mean, from the materials that were presented to us, to me, it was an easy, um.
Slam dunk.
It was, I wouldn't say slam dunk, it was a slam dunk. There you go. It wasn't as bad as me. No, it was, it was an easy request to grant, and it came out well, but.
The site visit was exactly as Joe said. I mean, it was the perfect place to put it in that double row of trees. If there was going to be lightning, maybe it would be, maybe something, but, um, I think it was well done, Joe.
Thank you. So would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Motion? Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
And would you like to take a roll call?
Stop.
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, it's granted. Okay, that does it for, we have on our, uh, agenda this evening, there's maybe one small piece of business. I don't know, can you want to, we have everybody here to discuss this afternoon meeting or on the record?
I think we can do it after. It's not, it's not a business.
So, motion to adjourn?
Uh, motion to adjourn, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Instead. All right.
Well, we could hold up for another.
I know you were doing that. This is a.
Our record.
Um, all right, so that's it for the meeting. Thank you very much, Steve, as usual. And, uh, the meeting is closed.